Good day everybody! Good day everybody! Good evening! Good evening everybody! Hello everybody! We are waiting Pastor Sunday now. He is in very important call now. So... In several minutes... In several... In few minutes Pastor Sunday will be here, so... We are waiting Pastor and greeting to everybody. Thank you for... Thank you everyone that you are... You enjoy us today. Okay? We are waiting Pastor Sunday. Yes, thank you very much that you... You are here every day. In the morning and afternoon. It's very important messages that Pastor Sunday share with us this time. Hello everyone! Hello! Thank you! Hello everybody! Good evening, good evening! Joseph, Yomi, Justin, Nikki... We are... I repeat again that we are waiting Pastor Sunday. He is in very important call now. In few minutes he will be here. And we will continue the morning subject. I think you remember that today in the morning, the topic was... Do you remember the topic? About work. Pastor was share with us about work. Hello everyone! Again and again I... I repeat that Pastor Sunday will be in few minutes with us. He is in very important call. Sorry! And he is coming. He is coming, so we are waiting. We are gathering all together. Okay? So... We are waiting Pastor. In few minutes he will be here with us. Hello everyone! So we are preparing for today's session with Pastor Sunday. He is in very important call, so we are waiting him. Thank you everyone that you join us today evening. My name is Natalia. And... Thank you everyone! Good afternoon! Oh, you are so... You are so many, thank you! Hello Lola Shurunke! Hello everyone! So we are waiting Pastor. Now, he is coming in few minutes. So... You can... If... If... Do you remember who was in the morning session? Which subject we had? You can write now in... In our chat. So everyone who will join us at evening today will know. It was about work. About work. About God's great invention for you, that is work. Pastor, now start session about work. What is work? And if you was in the morning, you... Or maybe you hear in... In the morning, you can... You can understand what I'm telling about. So everyone, good evening! Who join us right now? I repeat that Pastor will be in few minutes. He is in very important call. So we are waiting him. And you can... You can share something about morning session. Your thought that you had in the morning session, you can write here. Oh Lola Shurunke from US, hello! Hello, I'm very glad to see you! I see you in every session in chat, so... God bless everyone! Thank you very much that you join our sessions. And we are... We are reading here about work. Yes, Anastasia McDonald is writing: "We were taught about work, God's great invention." This was in the morning. And Pastor Sunday will continue this tonight. So he is... He is coming in few minutes. He is in very important call. Sorry for this, but we... We are here together. God bless everyone! Yes, and you remember the topic in the morning? Yes? Shola Lamodi is writing: "The topic from this morning was work, God's great invention for you." Yes, it's the next session that Pastor Sunday will teach us these days. And before he... He was talking about time. About time. Very important topic and very new point of view in this topic that we receive from Pastor. So good evening everyone again! In few minutes Pastor Sunday will be here. He is in very important call. And... But we are waiting him. Good evening everyone! Please stay with us, don't go! Pastor is coming! Good evening everyone! I am Ukrainian, so... And I'm very impressed and I very thank you that you are from all the world, come to this session to hear our Pastor Sunday. Yeah, hello Christina Bonder! Hello everyone! Margaret Omulade! Thank you that you are here! Yeah. Anastasia is writing: "Pastor Sunday taught us we should be excited about... Excited about work as we get to discover the wealth of resources buried in us." So thank you Anastasia! Yeah, thank you for watching us! Hello! We are waiting Pastor Sunday. He will be in few minutes. He is a very important call, so please stay with us. And we will... We will wait Pastor. Hello! Good evening everyone! Good evening! Hello everyone! So a new people is joining us now. And I repeat that Pastor Sunday will be in few minutes here with us. He is in very important call, so we are waiting him. Okay. Thank you very much! No, I am not Pastor's wife, no! No, my name is Natalia and I am one of disciples of Pastor. I... I am from Ukraine. And I always ask you join Pastor in these sessions. I know Pastor 18 years. I came to the church, God Embassy Church, 18 years before. So I... I grow up in this church and my life is changed. So everybody hello! Hello Esther! Hello everyone! So we are waiting. We still waiting Pastor. He is coming. And he just wanted to start at 9:00. And just give you to know that he is coming. He is waiting, meeting with you. Thank you for your passion! Yes, hello everyone! Rachel! Vladimir Kirichenko! Naomi, everyone! Thank you for coming! And for everyone who join us now, I repeat that Pastor Sunday will be in few minutes. He have now very important call, so... We stay, we are waiting him. Thank you, stay with us! Thank you everyone! Very glad to see you everyone here! Thank you for coming! Pastor Ni... Pastor Joseph? Yes, I'm 18 years in this church. I... For 15 years I was missionary in Greece. And you know, I... I see everything that you are hearing now about Embassy of God. I know this not just hearing, but I was watching everything that was happen here in Embassy of God. So for me is reality. And we want this reality will be also in all the world. So I want thank you everybody that you are interesting and you coming in this session of Pastor Sunday. So I repeat again for everyone who... Who just join us, to let you know that Pastor Sunday coming in few minutes. He is in very important call. So we still waiting him a few minutes. Thank you for staying with us! Thank you! Okay. Natalia Dibrova! Hello, blessing everyone! So and if you was in the morning session that Pastor Sunday did today morning, can you write your thought for everyone who was not in this session in the morning? So our friends can see your impressions and your thoughts from the morning session about work. Yes. Hello everyone again! Hello everyone again! Okay. Let's... Let's see your thought from the morning teaching of Pastor Sunday until he come. He is coming. And... He is coming. And I see Anastasia, she is... She is writing: "We were also taught that it an error to think that we, the children of God, should pray for favor rather than work." Yeah. Yeah, but today in the morning Pastor taught us about work. The great invention for you. So this time, this week, I suppose we will hear a lot of things that Pastor Sunday will share with us about work. What means work for us? Why God give us work? And how we can use work for ourselves, for Kingdom of God and for our lives? So I repeat again for everyone who join us just right now that Pastor Sunday is coming in few minutes. He has very important call. So he asked me to stay here and remind and tell you this. Thank you for watching us from all the world. It's nice to see you guys here, everyone! So... And... Everything... It's nice. And I again want to thank you, everyone of you that you have time and you find time to join session with Pastor Sunday every morning and every night. And welcome you! And ask you and call you to visit Ukraine if you... If you wish, visit Ukraine. It will be nice when you will see by your own eyes what happened here. Hello everyone again! Oh, from Jordan, in Jordan! Wow, more happy! Oh, nice to see you! And Pastor is writing... Pastor Kiro writing: "Why we work, we discover more about ourselves." Yes, this was one of the thoughts that we was hearing today in the morning in session about work. The great invention for you from God. Yeah. Esther Kuganya is writing: "One day of favor is better than one years of labor." Is a lie! This teaching promotes laziness. Yeah, Pastor Sunday in the morning teaching, he was mentioned about this favor. That work is not curse for us. Work was in the garden of Adam. Yeah. What? Oh, Afolabi is writing: "That means he is going to spend more time with us today, because 15 minutes is already passed." Yeah, this 15 minutes now Pastor Sunday, a gift for very important task. So because he is care about old people, you see? So but you will be... You will be very glad to see him today and hear his message today. Good evening everyone! And I repeat again for everyone who join us right now that Pastor Sunday is have a very important call. I think he will explain you when he will be here in few minutes. So sorry for this, but we are very glad to see you today. Thank you for joining us this evening. And hello from Australia! Keisha Bell is writing: "Hello Keisha! Thank you for coming and join us today here." Oh, Amy Body is writing: "Work is a great invention for me to fulfill God's purpose of my life." Very, very good Amy! And yes, it's true Pastor Sunday mentioned this thought in the morning. That work is a great invention for you, for everybody of us personally. And through work, we can fulfill God's purpose of our life. It's true! Work is blessing for us. If we understand the meaning, the full meaning of this invention that is called work from God. Okay. Thank you Coffee for praying with Pastor Sunday. Hello everyone again! Thank you everyone! And I repeat again for everyone who join us in this second that Pastor Sunday is coming in few minutes. And thank you for your time! Thank you for waiting and staying with us. He will be in few minutes. He have a very important call now. So this... You see that only if it's... Very important things Pastor delay now here. So hello Beatte from Ireland! Hello! Very glad to see you Beatte! We missed you! You was in Ukraine here first time and we missed you already. Our tune the Sylvester Davidzell, hello from Luxembourg! Hello! Nice to see you here! Stay, stay with us! Pastor Sunday is coming now in few minutes. Yeah. From SHB seller Kenneth! Hello from Leeds, United Kingdom! Hello! Hello Elizabeth Ali! Hello everyone! Patrick Williams from Florida! Nice to see you guys! You know, we are a very big family. Maybe we don't know each other by face, but you know, by writing here we will know. And in spirit we are one, so it's great! And Joseph Oyewole is writing: "Work is not a curse, it is a great blessing." It is a great blessing. "We are created in God's image." If God, our Creator, worked, if we refuse to work, who do we? Yeah, really! In the morning Pastor Sunday, he mentioned one verse from Bible when Jesus said that "My Father is working until now, so I am working also." So Jesus was looking on his Father that was working, and he was working as well. Yeah. And here Kazim Ahmed Olatuni is writing: "God stopped creation in the garden of Adam. It is now man's responsibilities to continue God's creation by working." Really, God did a great work when he created our earth. So now is our time to create here because he gave to us this beautiful earth. Thank you! Okay, I still remind everyone who join us today that Pastor Sunday is in very important call. So he will be in few minutes with us. Thank you for staying us! And Keisha Bell is writing: "Is 3:00 AM now in Australia, but I woke up because I don't want to miss out?" Wow, Keisha Bell! So you have a very big destiny for this session, for this time. Hello from Germany! Lise success is writing. Hello! And Shade Edegoke, hi from London UK! Hello! Lola Shurunke is write: "Tell us about details of HMT." Yeah. HMT will be in November from 6 until 12 of November 2016. And you can write if you wants to visit, to come for HMT in Ukraine. Pastor Sunday will teach everyone who will come. And History Maker Training. HMT means History Maker Training. If you wants to come for HMT, you can write to email: And you can ask and receive also all information about HMT in November of this year. So Glory Babe, hello from Delaware USA! Hello Glory! So a little bit we will know one each another. Hello! Oh, hello everyone! Hello! God bless everyone of you! So I just remind you now that Pastor coming in few minutes. Just thank you for your patience and we are waiting him. Pastor Sunday have a very important call. This is reason why he is not yet here with us. But he is coming and he will be very glad to see everyone of you here. Yeah. Abosede Odediran is writing: "Bless your sister, Mr. Roberts from Italy." Hello! Hello you to Italy! Rachel Igbinovia is writing: "I wasn't on this morning, however, I was able to reply. I believe strongly in favor. That is while one is working, they can trust God too." If you wasn't in the morning session, you can see this video in Facebook of Pastor Sunday page and look this session, morning session. Nikki Christian, hello everyone! And from India people is writing: Aarun Kumar Westlidhodi, hello again from Hyderabad, India. "Work is the first commandment from God to Adam to take care of the garden." Amen, yes! Sure, real! Amy Body is writing: "And I pray that my heavenly Father will use me in this wonderful way." He is using Pastor Sunday to reach out to many children of God. Yeah. So... And Esther Kuganya is writing something that we was hearing in morning session about work. "In the New Testament, the Sabbath is not a day. The Sabbath is Jesus Himself. He is our rest once we come to Him." Wow! Yes, and I repeat again to everyone that Pastor Sunday, he is in very important call. And he will be with us. As he finish, he will come here. He will be with us. Thank you for your passion and thank you that you stay with us! Thank you everyone! Thank you! And you are always welcome to Ukraine. To Ukraine in November from 6 until 12 of November. Pastor Sunday will teach in HMT, History Maker Training here for everyone at English, especially at English, especially for people that is coming abroad to Ukraine. So if you wants to come, if you are interesting to come, you can write in email: Oh, you are so many! You are so many, your writing! Thank you everyone! Welcome everyone here! And Joseph Oyewole is writing: "The beauty of our creative ability is released through work." Through... When you work, you give yourself opportunity discover the many... Okay. Clement, Pastor Clement, hello! Okay, welcome everyone! Thank you for your passion! Now Pastor Sunday is in very important call, so we are waiting him. We are waiting him. He will explain what is call he had, so... Yeah, thank you for your waiting! Thank you! So in the morning session, Pastor Sunday was talking about work. The biggest invention, the great invention for you. So God create work for us, so we can discover ourselves. We can take out all our potential. And work is really blessing for us. And you know, I just want to tell that I see how Pastor Sunday is working. You know, he really work all the time. He... When you stay with him, when you work with Pastor Sunday, when you are here and you watch how he is working, he is very concentrate in work. And really, the atmosphere that Pastor Sunday create around of him, it's a really blessed working atmosphere. And you feel that your potential is, you know, is just go out from you. So it's a very strong experience that I personally have working with Pastor Sunday. And Afolabi Victor is writing: "You cannot fulfill your purpose without work." Blessing... Blessindra Odiyahi write: "I wasn't here this morning because of my work." But Blessinda, you can hear reply this, the video. But Blessinda, you can hear reply this, the video from morning session in the Facebook page. So thanks God, we have opportunity to hear a lot of times the morning session. I'm in Kiev. Yeah, so thank you for your understanding. Pastor Sunday will be here with us, he is in very important call. So I think that the time that he will spend with us today, in this time, he will give us, you know, the full, full, full information and full, full points that will indramic us. So thank you for your patient. You know, in the morning Pastor Sunday also was mentioned about our brain, that our brain is working all the time. And even in Saturday, you know, our brain is working all the time. God create our brain and he is working all the time. So really, we cannot stop our brain to don't be in working. So God create work and this is blessing for us. Yeah, many of people now is writing that they was not able to watch in the morning because of work. So, but you know, you can see video from the morning session. Esther Kuganya is writing, "In the morning, we learned this analogy. We are made in the image of God and our brain never ceases to work till death." Really, yes. Yeah. And Carol Anderson is writing, "All hail from Trinidad and Tobago. I thank God for the truth being revealed from Pastor Sunday." Thank you very much, thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, and Lola Sherunki, please introduce Pastor Igor another in the house. Yeah, in the house here, there is whole team of people that is working with guests. And when you will write in guest@gotembassy.org, Igor, he will answer to you, Igor or Alona, he will answer to you. And he will be stay in touch by writing by email to you. So there is team of people that is working with guests here. Arun Kumar Wesley Dodi is writing, "We need Pastor Sunday to visit India." Wow, yeah, really. Yeah, we also is waiting people from India and Ukraine, welcome. A lot, a lot of comments, thank you for staying with us, thank you very much. And Pastor will be in few minutes, he is in very important call. But really, when he will come, I am very sure that you will receive a lot of thoughts that will be very strong and renew the strength and the hearts of everyone of us. So we stay waiting Pastor Sunday now. He is in very important call, you know. And because Pastor have a lot of work and he is all time thinking about people. So in this time, he is in call that is very important for people. So thank you for waiting him now. Thank you everyone. Znichen Neoraab is writing, "Yes, we are excited also to Pastor Sunday to preach here in Amman, Jordan." Wow, and you always, always welcome to Ukraine also. And stay in touch with us, thank you very much. Afolabi Victor is writing, "In the morning session, I learned that work is not a cause, curse, but a blessing." Yes, it's really true. And Pastor Sunday will continue to teach us why work is a blessing and how we can use work to discover ourselves and everything he, God have put in us. Hello.
I'm so, I'm so, so sorry. Let me see what you are saying. I'm sure you've been waiting for me. My God, I'm so tired. I'm so tired. I've been on one call or the other. I've been on one call or the other since the morning program was, since I came out of the morning program. Unfortunately, I cannot disclose to you what was going on. But I am by the grace of God, being given the privilege by God to discuss issues that might determine the destiny of my nation. So, so I needed to, you know, that is important to me, that's important to me. Because 200 million people almost are crying and weeping and suffering in that country. And I've been telling anybody that they are still listen. I've been telling the whole world that I'm going back to Africa and that when I go, that I alone am enough. So by the grace of God, with God on my side, turn around the destiny of that country. And I'm not going to do it through church, I'm not going to go as a church, as a church. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about church, I'm not talking about church. I'm talking about transformation. I'm talking about redemption for the country. I'm talking about resolving every single problem in that country. That is what I'm talking about. And this call today might be maybe one of the most singular, important, maybe one of the most important thing that will ever happen in the destiny of this country. Because we are going to trigger something that will make all our pain and all our problems a thing of the past, a thing of the past. And just pray, I would not, I would not tell you anything more. Just pray, if you people, you know, have relationship with God, any one of you that has relationship with God, just pray that whatever Pastor Sunday is talking about and whatever discussion Pastor Sunday is having and whatever that is, that God should just make it be fruitful, that God should bless, bless it. And the process that is being started right now, that is being triggered, that it will be accomplished to the end, that nobody and nothing will truncate it, that nothing will, nothing will stop it. All the people who are now saying that the country is falling apart and something like that. You know, I told everybody that care to listen, that don't throw away your Nigerian passport. All of you in the diaspora who are Nigerians or people from other countries and who are suffering. Nigeria will become a refuge soon and we are going to be at the center of it. And all the things that I've been teaching you here, that you can become anything, that you can resolve any problem, that you could become anything you want to become, that you could become the answer, the solution, that the church is the answer. They are not just empty talk, they are not just big talk. I've done it in Ukraine and I'm about to do it for my country Nigeria right now. I'm about to do it for my country Nigeria by the grace of God. I think God has decided to find a Moses for that country. I mean, not Moses, yes, but not just Moses, but Moses and Joseph as well. I think, if you know what Joseph did, all of you that know the Bible, you will get my quote, this is my code word for you. Yeah, Joseph is arising for the continent of Africa in general and for Nigeria in particular. The problems that we are facing right now, problem of electricity will be a thing of the past. If by the grace of God, everything that I'm doing, I'm working on this call today, that if it will come to pass, that our electricity challenges will be a thing of the past. And not just that. Problem of bad roads, infrastructure will be a thing of the past. And Nigerians at last will be able to come back home. And sorry, I wanted to talk today about revival, but you know it's not going to happen, you know it's not going to happen. I'm not going to be able to talk on that. You know, first of all, I'm so, I'm so tired. It's like, it's like people, it's like 200 people took stick and just beating me, my muscles are so weak and tired right now. It's like, it's like somebody, some people have just been beating me like crazy. You know, every, I'm so weak and tired, but, but I'm okay. And, and so I'm not going to be able to preach like that anyway today. I would not preach today, I think I would just make that message come tomorrow. I think I would just do that message tomorrow. But, but you know, I'm going to spend this time with you and talk heart to heart and just talk like brethren and just talk heart to heart to each other. And, but you know, I think God has decided to favor Nigeria. And I think there is a reason why he took me away, to be away out of that country for 30 years. Can you imagine, I've been away for that, out of that country for 30 years. And now God is telling me to go back. God is telling me to go back and it's acute, it's acute me enough. And it's giving me the connection and the resources to go back. And when I was telling somebody, I was, I released a video the other day and I said, I said, I'm going to put a hospital, a clinic, that I'm going to put a clinic in every local government area in Nigeria. Some people are saying, this is impossible, it's just an empty talk, that I'm talking like a politician. And other people are saying, where will he get the money? I mean, it's so expensive to put clinic all over in every local government of Nigeria, where will he get the money? Well, well, that is exactly why I was not there today with you. That is why I was not there today with you. So he that ask here will hear today. And that's why I was not there with you. Just pray that all the pastors and the people who want to destroy me and my name and who are, who want to stop me from going to Nigeria, just pray that they will not succeed. Because if they stop me, they are not just stopping me, they are stopping a whole, the cry and aspiration of 200 million people. And they are going to stop, you know, the cry and aspiration of other African countries. But God is not going to allow them to do that, that's not going to happen by the grace of God. But because of today and because of this call today, Nigerians will smile again, Nigerians will smile again. And I told the people who know me, who are very close to me, I told them that I just mentioned one little thing. That thing I said about the clinic in every local government is like, you are having $1,000 and then you just showed $1 out of $1,000, you show $1. And you just show $1 and said, this is my money, I have $1. And everybody say, wow, $1, how will you get that, where did you get that $1 from? It's not yours, it's not possible. So the thing I'm going to do about clinic, by the grace of God, that is nothing. That's a drop in the ocean compared to what we are coming to Nigeria with, compared to what we are getting coming to Nigeria. So if you have not registered yet for Nigeria, for the Nigerian project, it doesn't matter what country you are coming from. You might be, like for example, I have Japanese going with me, I have Russians going with me, I have Ukrainians going with me, I have Jews going with me. I have people from all over Europe going with me, from America people are going with me. So if you have not yet registered and you are thinking, I don't have money, I don't have this, don't worry about that, that's not your problem. We just need you to have a heart to love the people, to love God. And we just will need you to have a project, what you want to do in the country, what you want to do to help the country. What do you want to do to, you know, to develop the country? What do you want to do? If you know what you want to do, go register. Go register on my blog, sundayatelagerblog.com. sundayatelagerblog.com, so go register there and write your name and fill the form. And also tell us what, write what you plan to do, what are your intentions. Anybody that has any project that will be good for humanity and that will be good for the people of Africa and Nigeria. I want to challenge you to go to that blog, register. It doesn't matter if you are from, if you are European or American or Asian, it doesn't matter what country you're coming from. If you just have a heart and you have any project that could help reduce the suffering of those people, you come with a project, don't worry about the money. First of all, come with a project, go register and come with a project. And you know, you know, don't worry about the money again, I'm saying. That's why I was not with you today. Because Joseph has to build his storages. Joseph has to build his storages. And the storages must be large enough to be able to feed not just Egypt, but Joseph was able to build storages that are big and large enough to be able to feed any other nation and all other nations that will come to ask for help and to ask for sustenance. So, yeah, so that's why I was not around today. And that's why I had to, I had to be gone. So if you, you know, if you go, you know, just remember this, this is my talk, this is my conversation before God. If you could remember it and, you know, and pray about it and ask God to just see everything true, to help every, all these plans that I'm having and all these projects that we are developing, that I already saw a big favor because, you know, the fact that I was able to, to get, to do all the calls and to make all the calls possible today, that was a huge breakthrough. That was a huge breakthrough on its own because it was not, I didn't know it was going to be possible like that. But if you are not from Nigeria, don't worry. Whatever we are going to do is going to affect your country as well. It's going to go worldwide, it's going to affect all of Africa. It's going to make, it's going to heal Africa and then it's going to heal the world. So, so don't be discouraged. And, yeah. I, I hope Natasha did a good job replacing me while I was not, when I was not here. Okay, vladimir, vladimir, vladimir. Vladimir, apiatnyses. Да? Хорошо, тогда пускай будет. Вроде бы уже, уже есть, уже есть. I'm sorry, I think I had a challenge with the internet there. I'm back, I'm back. And Kiru said, even Facebook, internet is telling me to go rest. I am so tired, but I'm going to be with you. You know, I'm a fighter. I just have maybe 10 or 20 more minutes to be with you. I'm going to be with you to the end and then I will, I will go out and just, I don't know. I will go out and just go and collapse on my bed or something. I need a massage, actually, I need a massage. I don't know if... So anyway, yeah. So anyway, you know about Nigeria, you know, God is helping us. We're not the government, not the government. We only need that the government will not disturb us. We only need that the government will not disturb us. Uh, we only need that the government will not disturb us, we only need that the government will not stand on the way, we only need that the government will cooperate. We only need the government to cooperate and, you know, to do what they need to do for the people. To, to, to do their own, to play their own role. But this is not going to come from the government, God is going to do this independent of the government. God is going to come with his own resources, God is going to come with everyone's resources and is going to deliver our nation and our country. So, uh, yeah, that's what is going to happen, it's not going to be about, uh, about. About, uh, about one country, I mean, one, one president or one political party. And it's so funny and it's so, it's such, what a, what a, what a paradox that this morning, somebody was mocking me. And, you know, saying that, uh, you know, God is punishing Nigeria because I supported Buhari. Uh, and I said, you know, you know, I, I don't want to play that political game, but, you know. Somebody just gave me a word this morning also, a prophetic word, this person is, I've never ever, I don't, you know, this person just. Saw my interview, uh, about Nigeria, uh, somewhere, uh, the internet. And he wrote me on, on Facebook, thank God I, I, I answer all my Facebook myself. So I saw the letter, it said, Pastor Sunday, I heard your interview about Nigeria. Uh, do you know what God showed, no, the, the prophetic vision God showed him about Nigeria? Uh, I said, no. So he said, for my eyes only. And he sent me a prophetic vision God showed him about Nigeria, that Nigeria is going to have a big great destiny. And that God is going to send somebody from abroad, a Nigeria diaspora, that God is going to use to restore that country. He was shocked when he heard me, what I was saying, and I was also shocked when I heard about his vision. That God is going to use a Nigeria in diaspora. And I don't, I don't know if Pastor Oyewole, uh. Joseph Oyewole is here tonight, he's, I think he's not here tonight, I've not seen his comments. He, he normally comments actively, if he's been here, he would have commented. Maybe he thought, I'm not going to be here, or maybe he didn't come at all. But he said in ninety-three. That, yeah, in ninety-three, God showed him a revelation about Nigeria and about all these things, crisis and all kinds of problems. Economic problems happening in Nigeria, all kind of negative things that we are seeing right now. And, uh, and then he says, you know, he also saw that, oh, he's here, Joseph Oyewole is here. So he said, he saw, uh, he saw that God is going to take a Nigeria in diaspora as well. And that Nigeria diaspora will come from, uh, abroad. And come back to, you know, and God is going to use him to, uh, to, to restore the country. And, you know, and, 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 you know, and he told me that yesterday, he had written to me about that before. But yesterday, he told, I was able to talk to him. And today, this morning, this man from America sent me this vision. And, uh, I, 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 even though the person who, that, that man is from the. From, I think, from eastern part of Nigeria, from the Ibo's. And he says, you know, even though he's, I think he's from that part of the country. He says, those people who are, want to divide the country and things like that, they just don't know what God has said. And, and it's so happened that today is the day I did that to, you know. Do this verified a call and that might give hope, not just hope. It's, we are going to make Nigeria, uh, Nigeria a leading country in the world. We are going to make Nigeria not just to have electricity or to survive or to have internet or just to, not to die of hunger. It's going to be an envy of the world, so you, if you know anybody that has, if you have not yet thrown away your passport, don't be in a hurry to throw away your passport. Don't be in a hurry to throw away your passport, don't be in a hurry. Uh, in fact, many people who are not from Nigeria will be claiming Nigerian citizenship soon. And, uh, so, uh, yeah. Uh, so, you know, good things are waiting for us, good things are waiting for us. I know, I know many things and that I cannot talk to about openly. Otherwise, people, I'm going to put myself in danger, my life in danger, and, uh, and a lot of people in danger. But, you know, the good thing is that we know God has not given up on Nigeria. And God is, I mean, when God told me really that my, hmm, my ministry is just starting. You know, that is crazy, how can my ministry just be starting? I mean, I have the biggest church, I built the biggest church in Europe from the age of thirty-three. You know, I, I have done so much that, yeah, I think, how can anybody do more? And God is saying, now my ministry is just about to start and it's going to start when I go to Nigeria. And, uh, you know, that is, that's unbelievable, that's unbelievable. So I was thinking, how could that be possible? But now I'm seeing it clearly. And, you know, I never even thought I would return to Nigeria anymore, I thought I would never return there. But now I understand why, for, but what I'm trying to say is that for God to prepare somebody for thirty years. Thirty years, you know, I'll be here thirty years. And God is saying, all that was preparation. All that is just preparation, all that was, all my thirty years in Europe had just been preparation. Can you imagine for a ministry that this preparation for thirty years? So now you might, you might understand, oh, my energy is coming back. Somebody is praying, I guess, my energy is coming back, I can't believe it, my energy is coming back. I'm feeling some grace, I'm feeling some energy right there, my energy is coming back, anyway. Uh, uh, yeah, so. For somebody to be prepared for thirty years and God is telling me that my ministry is just about to start. I said, then what is, what is going to come? But now I know what is going to come. Only I, I think I'm going to have problem making people believe what's going to come, what is going to be nice. So by the grace of God, by, by the grace of God, uh, you know, you know, we are going to be. Just pray that God should give us long life and you long life so that you will see it. But when I talk about my plan for Africa and for Nigeria, people think this guy is just a dreamer. Anyway, if you, if you are hearing me right now and you have ear to hear, you better believe it. You better go and campaign to all your friends and relatives that it's time to get ready to go back. If, yeah, if you want to join Pastor Sunday's, Pastor Sunday's team to go back to Africa, that might be one of the greatest transformations that the world will ever see. And that is when, it's not the government that is going to transform the country, but people are going to transform the country. Let me show you my book on that, if you have not read my book on that, you've got to go get it, you've got to go get it. This is my book on Nigeria that I wrote this year, Nigeria and the Leadership Question. So these are my ideas on how I plan to resolve the problem of Nigeria. It's on Amazon and it's on Okada, okadabooks.com. On amazon.com and okada, uh, okadabooks.com, so go get this book. It will show you what I'm talking to you about, about my plans for Nigeria. So, you know, everybody, thank you so much for waiting for me. And if you believe in Nigeria as well, let me hear your thoughts, let me hear what you think about, but this is my meeting. Can you imagine, for me, this is my session with you. Uh, this is my session with you is, um, what do you say, is my, is a very, is my priority of the day, is my priority of the day. By the way, who is this? Curtis Anthony Simpson, Simpson, Simpson. We, what do you mean? You said we should use your platform, I don't understand what you mean, Curtis. Could you write to me? I will just give you my email, Curtis Anthony. Just write to me, my email is pastor@godembassy.org. So Curtis, if you will write to me about whatever you are, you wrote there. About your platform, about whether I'm using your platform, I didn't understand that so much, write to me more, in much more detail. And, uh, uh, yeah, and I will, I will reply you, I will get to talk about that. Sh- uh, sure, Andre, I wrote to you, you said I should get in touch with you. I wrote to you, Andrew, uh, on your, on your inbox, but you never replied. And, uh, and I also told somebody to, you sent your telephone, I, we also, I told somebody to send, uh, the SMS to you. And you never replied also, so sure, Andre, or sure, Andre, if you want to see me. Uh, you, you know, you know how to see me, I'm here in Ukraine, I'm here in Kiev, so if you need to see me, you can see me, I'm here. Or write me, you know my email, you know my, uh, inbox in the, on the internet, you know, write to me, I'll be happy to see you, sure, Andre. Okay, so anyway, uh, let me hear what you ask, you people are going to say. I need to go get some rest, I think you people are right, but I will read some of your comments and then I will go and take some rest, I guess. Timothy Jaiola says, sir, you have really warmed up so much passion in me that new Nigeria is possible, I will start the campaign. Good, good. Uh, Evangelist Mujeez said, together we can make it, pastor, yes. Elvis says, sir, talk about Africa and not Nigeria alone. Oh, yeah, I'm talking about, but it's going to start from Nigeria and it's going to touch all of Africa, believe me. Napoleon, uh, Imasun said, I want to finish my project fast, fast, so I can be able to join you on your mission for Africa, okay? Thank you. Okay. Curtis Anthony Simpson, American, okay. Olukayo Deakunda, your pastor Sunday, your vision is sure and your mission is already accomplished in the spirit realm. Every obstacle have been rooted out in Jesus' name. Christie, uh, says, I will, I will see it because now I know it's time to go back home. I'm so excited, I'm screaming. Yeah, uh, you know, make sure you register and another thing I want you to do, if you want to go to Nigeria, you don't have to be from Nigeria, but if you want to go in my team. You want to see how a country is going to be transformed, uh, I want you to, please, don't just come empty-handed. I want you to come, uh, prepared with some vision, you must have some vision, you must have something that you know to do. You know, Nigeria is such a place and Africa in general that we are in so much need, so many needs. Even if you know how to read alone, that is also, it's something you could bring to Africa. Uh, you know, even if you just know how to write, some people are there in Africa who don't even know how to read or write. So anything you can do, anything you know to do will be a contribution in Africa, anything will be good. So, uh, if you want to join us, please. Okay, you never asked to why I don't pray for revival, I'm so sorry, that is the topic I was supposed to be giving today. Why I don't pray for revival, that, but I didn't touch that topic today because I came late, uh, I was busy on another call. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to give that topic tomorrow, okay? I'm going to do that topic tomorrow. I think I'll probably change the name for this title, for this, for this, uh, particular, uh. Uh, message today right now, I'll probably change this title to a special session, session or something like that. And, uh, and I will give, I, I will do the one of tomorrow, again tomorrow. So, yeah, I will, the, the one of revival, the topic of revival, I will probably start that tomorrow morning, okay? Because, uh, today, we, I couldn't do that because, uh, for obvious reasons. So if, so if you want to come to Nigeria with me, don't just come empty-handed, okay? You make sure that you come with some projects, some ideas that you would like to do, uh, come with something. Don't just come empty-handed, okay? Uh, come with an idea, come with some suggestions, come with a vision. If you have a vision, you, you know, that vision is going to come to pass. It's not your, it's, it's not your problem how to get the resources, okay? That vision is going to come to pass. I'm going to call this a special session. With Pastor Natasha. Natasha. Pastor Sunday. Yeah, so please go share the link again, I've just changed the title of this. Uh, of this, uh, of this, of this meeting today, of this, uh, session today. I've just changed the title, so go share the link again, if you have not, yeah, if you have not shared it or if you have shared it before. You might want to share it with a new title, because the other title that is there will have to come tomorrow, that title will have to come tomorrow. Uh, okay, let me see what you were saying. Valentine says, that's a wonderful news from God, so happy. Curtis Anthony, you are sending me your, your information here, no, I don't want you to send you your information here, I'm not going to call you. You write me, my email is pastor@godembassy. God Embassy, one word, god embassy dot o-r-g, org. Pastor@godembassy.org, you send me your contacts there, but don't just say, send me your contact, send me your information. Tell me something about what you are doing, I don't know your project so much. Okay. Andrew says, uh, keep blessing lives, pastor, I'm definitely one of such blessed lives, oh, good, thank you. Uh, Elizabeth Alice says, I believe it and I know it will happen, Nigeria will be changed. Uh, Andrew Abba says, I love and respect you so much, but the only place you did not do well is imposing Nij- Buhari on Nigeria. I hope you will apologize on that, well, I just released a video about that today, go to my blog, I mean, to my blog. Or to my Facebook here timeline, timeline and see what I think about that. I, I don't only did not, I, I did, I don't only did not regret. Uh, campaigning for Buhari, I thank God that I campaigned for Buhari. I thank God for the trust and the privilege to campaign for Buhari. And I thank God that God used me to bring him to power also, with also many other people that he used. And I thank God that it's not Jonathan that is running Nigeria right now. If it had been Jonathan, Nigeria would have been the same, in the same situation as Venezuela most likely. So I thank God that God brought Buhari out, I'm not regretting about that and I'm not getting ready to apologize about anything. I'm not going to apologize and you will live long by the grace of God to see that during this, uh, Buhari regime. Nigeria is going to be changed, uh, and I don't think, I don't put my hope in Buhari personally. I don't care if it's Buhari going to, you know, I don't put my hope in Buhari, I put my hope in God and I believe myself, I know what I'm going to do. And I know what I'm bringing to Nigeria myself, so I put my hope in God, I put my hope in, in people of Nigeria. But we needed a change at that time and the thing that is happening is as a, is a consequence of the bad government that was run. By, you know, by the people before him, he has not succeeded in destroying the country in one year of his being there. He's just trying to clean up the mess and it's not about him, he is not the one that is blowing up the, 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 the pipelines. He's not Buhari that is blowing out the pipelines, it's not the Bu- Buhari that is, that has reduced the price of oil three times. So you just have to think a little bit, Andrew, if you learn to think critically. You will discover that what is happening to Nigeria now is not, was not caused by Buhari. He's just there for one year, he's not succeeded in causing all the trouble, he's just trying to clean up what he got there. So, so be fair, and I'm so ashamed that you are a Christian, if you are a Christian and you have conscience. You can, you know, and you know the truth and you can speak the truth, how could you say that it's Buhari to blame for the problem we are having? You either is illiterate who think like that, you have to be either an illi- an absolute illiterate. Who has been deprived of the ability to use his brain and mind to think critically, to think that it's Buhari that is causing the problem. Or you are just not being objective, or you've just outrightly decided not to be objective. And you are still coming here to my own platform telling me to repent, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm rather very proud. I think it's one of the greatest things that has happened to Nigeria, that we elected Buhari. And he's not the one causing the problem, the problem that he made the problem there and he's trying to fix it. And you people who supported the people who caused the problem, instead of you to hide your face in shame. And to, to, to be crying and asking for repentance from Nigerians, you are still saying, I'm trying to pass the blame on. And to, to, to be crying and asking for repentance from Nigerians, you are still saying and trying to pass the blame on. You know, you put, what's wrong with your conscience? What's wrong with your conscience? Wake up. Be God-fearing at least. I am surprised that people could be so uh bigoted to the extent of just being blind to the obvious. This is a shame. And I'm even more ashamed that some of them are Christians. It's a shame, it's a shame. It's a shame and a disgrace. I'm so sorry. That some people would just be so, no, biased and so full of prejudice to the extent. Of just, you know, not being objective. I mean, you are slant, you are slandering truth. You are committing, you know, false accusation, false witness. You, you know, you are doing things that Christians shouldn't do. It's a shame, it's a shame. And for you to be a Christian, that is just a disgrace, that is just a disgrace, that is just a disgrace. I'm sorry. So, well, I think. I think it's about time for me to go. I think I should just go and leave you people alone because I don't have the strength to argue right now. I don't have the strength to talk and uh to, to make any point and to argue with anybody. Uh today, today I need some rest. Anyway, I will see you guys tomorrow. I'll be back tomorrow by the grace of God. Uh Valentine is there, I shouldn't go yet. And you have any question? If you have any question, I will still answer, but you know. If you want to tell me anything or you want, you want to have any question, but I just, I'm just, you know. Okay, Julius is saying something sensible here. Pastor, uh please empower the farmers too. God will use you so powerfully, I believe you are God. Yes. One of the plans that we have is to be able to do, hmm, to be able to empower. Local people in every local government, in farming and agriculture. And maybe one of the things that I'm really believing God for is to be able to help, have a center in every local government. Where they could have, uh you know, help, help center for, for everybody that uh. Uh wants to do agriculture. So I'm going, I have different models that we could use. There is this Shanghai model in Shanghai, Shanghai mode, model in Benin, Benin Republic. And uh it's, it's a modern way of doing agriculture. I think it's a Shanghai center or something they call it, or something like that, Shanghai or something like that, I can't remember. So that is probably what the model will adopt, but we'll see if there will be better models. Okay, Rachel is asking about mental health. Yes, we are going to have center for mental health in every local government as well. We are going to have mental, uh you know, what happens is that in every local government, in, no, in every state. They already have uh center for uh mental health issues, but they are not functioning. Because there is no financing. So we need, we will need specialists and we will need experts to go with us to Nigeria to run those things. So it's not about financing them alone that we need. We need people to run them for us as, as well. Yeah, the center I was talking about in Nigeria is called Center Shanghai, Shanghai Importable, you're right. And also, uh while I'm talking about that, you know, many of, I have a lot of, I spoke about my books that I have in English. I mean, in Russian, and some of these books are already, uh they are, we are translating them to English. They're already translated in English, but we need somebody to help us uh put them in proper English. Because they're, you know, Russian, you know, when you translate from another language, totally, I cannot publish it, I cannot even give somebody to read. So if some of you are willing to help us, this is going, this is going to be for free, but if you need money, I can pay you money. If you, if you want to do it, but you have to do a good job as your part-time job or as your, you need money, yeah, we'll pay you for it. But we just need people to help us translate the book, I mean, to put the book in proper English so that we could give. You could, we could use it to be a blessing to all of you. So if you want to help correct my, my books and put them in proper English, you might need to write me as well. Uh it's to pastor@godembassy.org. Write to me, to pastor@godembassy.org. And we'll send you some books to help us translate or interpret. So I mean, to help us put in correct English. Uh but uh yeah, a lot of projects that we're having for Nigeria. And uh I just uh pray that, just keep on praying for me. And keep on praying for, uh you know, keep on praying for me and keep on praying for. Uh all the people that are helping me and all the relationship that we are building now. And you know, I'm very careful about working with Nigeria because. The reason I told you, we're going to give me the contacts of people you might know with the government. Is that I, I'm not, you know, I've left Nigeria like thirty years now, so I'm not really sure of. You know, working with Nigeria, especially people in the government. It doesn't matter who they are, but you know, we need them too because, you know. That's their country, they are the people in government. So we need to pray that they will really be able to understand what I'm doing. And they will be able to cooperate, they will not stop us and they will not uh be a hindrance to us. Today we had very good talks with one of them and they, they seemed to be excited, they seemed to be open to what we are bringing. And you know, you just pray that they will keep on being open for, you know, continuously like that. And that uh we'll be able to bring all the things that we need to bring to the people of Nigeria. If that happens, keep, don't throw away your Nigerian passport. God bless you, I'm going, I'm, I'm just going to rest, I cannot, I'm going, guys. You know, I'll see you tomorrow. God bless you, guys. Bye.